So, uh, we remember last time we started off with confronting the witch hunter, the witch hunter, air quotes, size boot, as he was trying to burn the village healer Matilda. Uh, you guys managed to stop that and put him under arrest in the town's single jail cell. Where you questioned him and you found out he's actually a con man named Blazer Dent. After interrogating him and talking him, uh, later on that evening while you were all at dinner, he was murdered in his cell. He was flayed alive. Um, his skin hung out. And we're gonna pick up now in the morning after the body has been discovered. And the whole town has heard about it. In fact, most of the villagers have coalesced in the village square. And Alexandre, the Elven valet, has taken credit for dispensing justice, I believe was your words. Correct?
I don't believe I actually described the reasons why. And in fact, I believe the idea now is that I need our local dragoon to organize a town meeting.
I think everyone's already in the town square.
I would say most of the people.
Yeah, well, that's only most of the people. I need everybody possible.
Okay, yeah. At this moment, like you can hear in the crowd, uh, hold up, hold that thought, everyone. Let's roll initiative before I forget, because I already forgot. So let's do that first. Everyone will... So if you remember, that's just your, uh, a D-ten plus your initiative.
Sorry, I'm looking for the... I know it's all added together on one tab. There we go. Initiative three plus PB is eleven.
Wait, where do you see that? I'm looking for.
Uh, I just hit the all open tab and it's the one listed right below the skills. Sorry, something's really fucked up my throat all of a sudden. Oh no, coronavirus!
It's immediately under fellowship.
Yeah, if you have the all open, or it's under talents and trappings, if you don't want to have it all.
Twenty.
Keep it all open, all the time.
Yeah, that's what I typically do.
Roll twenty. Oh my god.
Yeah, basically put everything into a PB. Well, my two bonuses to PB and I had like a... What did I roll? I had a fifty-two perception to start with, so. And I got a plus one for being an elf. So I was just naturally perception focused. Just why I noticed you and your weird stuff, Rutherford.
Uh, it had nothing to do with me acting completely out of place.
Hiding in a corner, wanting to change clothes all the time.
Rest...
Do not make fun of my clothes.
Well, I rolled a D-ten, I rolled a four. I'm trying to see what bonuses, if any, I'm supposed to get.
That would be a natural seven so far, and then you add your, um, perception bonus. What is your perception?
Uh, thirty-seven, which gives me a bonus of plus four.
Plus three. Oh, plus four means you must have a, uh, if it's a, uh, plus...
Ratio.
Yeah, so you would have an eleven total.
Yeah, if you look under fellowship, I see, I'm like looking at your sheet right now, you'll see initiative. Yeah, it's right there in the middle. So you add that number plus your initiative. So plus seven, so four plus seven is a...
Got it. Alright, thanks.
Now, I'm not saying we're gonna immediately get into a fight, but if we do, we're prepared. Okay. So, um, the point of all that was while you're sort of, uh, you know, taking stock of the town and looking around, trying to see who's here, you can, you can hear the furious voice of none other than Marcia Ziegenholt descending into the town square. Um, so what, what are you guys doing? What are you trying?
Well, I mean, I imagine I'm standing on something tall.
What does the immediate area look like?
So in the town square, the church is there, uh, the tavern and the blacksmith shop, uh, the blacksmith is sort of in this town square. Those are all the services in the town. Um, in the immediate area is sort of the gaggle of villagers who live in Bogenhoffen proper, who were the, sort of the first on the scene. So, um, people like Anton, Lucius, um, some of the other folks who live in the city, uh, coming from the north are the Hutfels and the workers who work in the Northfields, and coming from the west are all the Ziegenhelts.
Alright, um, I'm, I think Rasmussen and I should hide out at the Blacksmith.
Well, I, I, I have no objection to that, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't actually remain not too far away from Genevieve and Alexander in case they need our assistance.
How far away would we be if we were at the Blacksmith?
Like, uh, like five yards probably. It's not a big town square. It's just sort of the middle.
Okay, so like if we're there, we're sort of on the periphery and we're able to react in case anything goes...
Yeah.
Alright. Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Alright, our, uh, your good friend, uh, Rutherford, uh, Delilah, you know, gives you an eyeing look, um, but she doesn't say anything. She seems more interested in Alexandre and Genevieve at the moment.
Genevieve is, uh, is kind of just hiding behind Alexandre at this moment. She doesn't like, she doesn't look comfortable being here.
We're all hiding behind someone.
And, uh, you found something to stand on, Alexandre, to make yourself...
Yeah, just something tall. I mean, if those, preferably I would love to have a podium, but I'm assuming there's not one of those asked out in the open. So maybe like, I don't know, a crate or something. Something that could support my weight.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe a very heavy duty wagon.
Oh, ouch.
Oh, poor elf.
Yeah, so, eh, I think seeing you, you can hear the venomous tone that Marcia is spewing at you. She's, eh, she's saying that, "That damn child eater, they don't cross us this last time. We're gonna burn him, burn him. He can't do that to a servant of the Lord." Um, and that's sort of the situation, uh, what are you, how are you gonna deal with, like, at this point, if your finger is on the pulse of the, of the town, it is, uh, you know, it's, it's at the boiling point.
Yeah. Hold on one sec. Um, real quick, uh, Nero, what, uh, character are you? Are you the guy who looks like a pirate?
Ye- yes, that's correct. I am Rasmussen.
Yes, he is the guy who looks like a pirate.
No, sorry, I was adding something to the overlay while we were setting up here, so I was just trying to get that done. Sometimes I forget which one of you, oh, that's right, Rutherford obviously looks like a noble. I don't know why I was even questioning that.
If I had any skills, I would have made his hair red and his eyes blue and bloodshot, but...
I hear that. Uh, yeah, so, um, I mean, I will let the people talk how they want to talk. I understand that this is going to happen regardless. But, uh, when enough people are in the area that I recognize that, uh, this is as many as I'm going to get, despite people hiding behind me for some reason.
Yeah, um, and realistically, uh, I think at this point, like Marcia, even though she's like viewing this, spewing this venom, and she's not getting too close to you because across from her, um, Elja and Anis Hutfield, the eldest of the Hutfields, you know, sort of an old man, um, wearing a big floppy head, of course, is, uh, you know, they're sort of on the other side, right? They're, once again, you're kind of in the middle of the two groups. And, you know, they're definitely brandishing their, uh, hardware, their weapons.
Right, but I'm gonna start slamming the end of my cane down against, I guess, the wood of the wagon until people start to quiet down at least a little bit so that I can talk.
Uh, yeah, it is effective. I don't think it needs a wall.
Alright, then I will loudly proclaim. As most of you know, three individuals entered our town on a witch hunt. One of these people claimed to be a witch hunter on a quest from the church to root out heresy. Pearl ing poor Matilda from her home, they sought to deprive us of our only experienced local healer on unfounded charges. They then attempted to abduct our honorable Father Seneca and force his acquiescence, ah, sorry, my tongue, his acquiescence of their actions, which he nobly declined to do, seeing through their farce. They proceeded to drag them through the streets as though they were animals. It was at such time that I was made aware of their presence in our village. I am more than well aware of how, how many of you view me. I am an outsider. More than that, I am an elf. Be that as it may, I am also a servant of the Graffs, and I am his will here in Bogenhoffen. Whether witch hunter may represent the will of the church and the eternal, mine is the law of the Graff and the material. In this world, the most important thing to me is to protect his property and his people. You are his people, so I acted to intercede on his behalf for you. I prevented the abduction and murder of an innocent under the Graff's protection and took the foreign agent in for questioning. It was there, under questioning, it was revealed to me that our would-be assailant, that his actions were not only condoned by the church, but was perpetrated by the greed of men alone. Sorry, not condoned. This witch hunter was both a blasphemer and a corruption unto the church itself. I chose to make an example of him to those that would act against the will of the Graff and his people, as well as those who would stand against the very tenants of the church. As many of you would have seen, his body lay flayed in the jail cell, a warning to those that would come after him. Bogenhoff is, ah, sorry, Bogenhoffen is protected against the lawless and the sinners of this world. Her people will not be unjustly persecuted without repercussions. I make this promise to you, my friends. So long it is in my power, no harm will come to you.
So let me, give me a leadership role. That sounds like me.
Cool, on trained.
And let's call it standard.
Cool, leadership is also a tagged skill, which means flip to fail.
Flipped fail.
You farted in the mirror.
And, uh, that's a pass, even with flip to fail. So... The immediate response in terms of like, before we get to what people say is, like, it's like they, they have to think about what you're saying, because you use a lot of big words and these are very simple people. And so they, it's like, it's turning in their minds, and they're like, well, you can see in the faces of a lot of people, even those who are coming from the Ziegenholt side, um, well, he did say, you know, the Graff did say something about this, right? Like, you know, he is a servant of the Graff, and I guess it's his right to do stuff like this. And while you can kind of see that, you see, uh, Marcia breaks from the crowd and grabs Jeb by, you know, by the shoulder and goes marching back towards their pasture. Um, and Anton Sakarius, the local miller, uh, comes up to you, and he says, uh, "That's a mighty big step to take, dispensing justice like that."
We do what we must for those that we must protect.
Don't see how he was, how you're gonna send a message to anybody here in town that way. Seems mighty suspicious.
Word of mouth is a powerful thing, Jeb. You alone should know that.
I, uh, I suppose. But it seems to me that there's still a, a threat to this town. Jebadiah came and spoke to me last night about it. And, uh, I'm in agreeance. I think there's a witch.
Wait, 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 wait. Who am I talking to? I thought I was talking to Jeb.
You're talking to Anton the Miller.
Sorry, sorry. I heard the word Jeb and I thought I was talking to Jeb, which makes my last thing make no sense.
Well, that's why I just... Um, yeah, he's, uh, you know, he looks like, if you remember, Anton is sort of like the de facto lea- like he's sort of the civilian leadership of the town. People definitely look up to him.
Oh yeah, no, I've got the thing open. Don't worry.
Yeah, for the others, not for him.
Okay.
And, uh, he's a, you know, he's a, he's a big guy. He's, he's middle-aged. He's got, you know, he's got scars and his hands are all messed up from working the mill for how many ever years. And, um, yeah, and he says, you know, "I, I agree with Jeb, and I think, uh, I think there is a witch." And he looks in the jail cell and sees Flade, and, you know, he looks towards the jail cell and he says, um, "I know, I don't know much about witchcraft, but if I had to say something a witch might do is play someone alive."
You know who else plays people alive, Anton? The law. The law man will make examples of people by playing them alive. And that's just not me, Jeb, uh, Anton. That is the standard of law, to make examples of people. And if I could spare you a moment of your time, I would like to remind you that the witch hunter's word was false. He had no claim to witchcraft here in town. He made that up. And that you would carry on his lie only proceeds to identify his, uh, persistence and his corruption.
He, uh, raises, he raises his voice a little bit, and, uh, he says, "Well, I don't know about that, but I do think that this ain't something the Green Man would have done." And he looks at the crowd, he goes, "Who's been giving us our justice recently?" Ain't the law, ain't the Graff. It's been this Green Man. Why should we trust anything you do? You didn't protect us when those deserters came to town three years ago. Couldn't do it. But he did.
So when he's talking about these deserters, what incident is that?
Um, so...
Yeah, apparently. I don't even know about this. That's how failed I did at that.
Um, this was about, right, this was written in Tommy's thing, never mind. Um, this is about three years ago, um, or maybe it's like five years ago, sorry. Um, a group of deserters were sort of plaguing the town. They were just, they were out in the woods, basically just bandits from the early days of the war. They were making life miserable, and the old dragoon wasn't, you know, he couldn't really fight them, so they had sort of made a nuisance for the town, and they had been stealing crops and livestock, until they started turning up just in front of the dragoon's door, you know, handcuffed and naked, like served up as justice until they were all caught. And that's how the legend of the Green Man started.
Okay, you know what? Literally, you did put this down. It's the one thing I forgot to respond to. How did I fight his legend? I didn't.
Yeah, there's the answer. And, uh, I guess this is coming back now.
Yep. Anton. Why are you doing this, Anton? Why is this a fight that you want to have?
Because as far as I see it, we ain't got enough for the Graff, but the Graff ain't giving nothing back to us.
I assure you, we have already paid the Graff. The tithe is fine. You need to stop worrying about it. I take care of me and mine.
Uh, why don't you take a guile test?
The thing is, I don't think I'm lying, though.
Uh, you, you're definitely lying, yeah.
I mean, I used...
The tithe is coming and you can't pay it, right? Like, you don't have enough stock. There's a bad harvest here, and there's no...
Really? All the extra steps I've taken?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're definitely helping, but is it totally taken care of? I don't think so, right?
Uh, fortune pool.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, guys. I need this. Fuck. Well, I was prepared to die today.
Yeah, I think he sees that and he says, "Well, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think it is. I don't know if you know this, Alexandre, but I've been in this town for a long time, and I've, and I've been making sure we get our, uh, that all the orders of flour we need out. Ain't no flour, ain't no money for the Lord. Now that miner's gone missing. Doesn't look good for us."
Alright, I'm gonna lower my voice a little bit, and I'm gonna say, Anton, if you know how things are, how hard things are now, we both know how hard things are now. Tell me, how is this helping? How is this gonna make the tithe? How is this gonna bring stability to this village? It's not, I'll tell you that, but tell me how you're helping.
He says, uh, "I'll tell you how I'm helping. We don't need to even pay this damn tithe. Graff can't even send miners up here to work the mines. Barely can afford to, can't even hire a proper reeve. Who's, what's he gonna do? And you, I don't think we need you around here no more either."
You know what's cheaper than, uh, than miners for a whole season, Anton? Mercenaries for a week. I assure you, the Graff will take care of his business if you make him. That's not a threat for me, Anton. I'm just as in the hole as you are. That ditch out back will be filled with all of our bodies if you want to make this move.
Uh, I think he's gonna back off now, right? I think like, you don't feel like you've convinced him of anything, but he's gonna like, he's gonna back off, and maybe he's gonna, he's gonna grab a couple other, other villagers, right, and sort of head to the, head back to his mill. Um, I mean, you sort of, you get the feeling that's like, uh, there's definitely, the relationship you had before is dissolved, right? Like, he's, he's not seeing you in that same way, kind of like you're talking to a different person.
Oh yeah, no, I thought he was a kindly old man, but the first time I talked to him, he's a real asshole.
Yeah, he's, he, um, he's definitely been changing. Uh, the rest of the crowd is still like, like the Ziegenhelts are kind of like retreating, going back, um, and everyone else is sort of like milling around to kind of see what, what happens to the body. This is the most interesting thing that's happened in the village, right? Like, that's there since the witch burning yesterday, I guess, so...
Well, there was no witch burning.
Yeah, but there almost was. That was exciting.
Man, the lengths that we've gone here to protect one person.
Now, this whole exchange, has this been taking place in front of the crowd, or was this just a private thing that you were having?
Eh, he was, Anton was speaking loud enough so everyone could hear.
I was not.
Um, yeah, but I mean, like, when they see him skulk off, I think they get the message.
Sure, that he left and I'm still here. The lesson of the last twenty years.
I'm going to ask Delilah to go out and, uh, uh, call, uh, agree with Alexander, Alexandre.
Okay, um, it sounds like a charm roll to me.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, normal, I wouldn't say, uh, Delilah smiles at you and she says, "Anything for you, sugar," and walks out. Um, and she begins like loudly agreeing with Alexandre and says, uh, "This ain't a message for us. Get back to work, folks. Go on." And, uh, you know, she starts, she's agreeing with the crowd, and so, Alexandre, um, any next move you want to take to influence what, what, what crowd is left, um, take a, a plus ten percent situational modifier there, so make it easier.
Uh, you know what? Would my new talent have applied to that guile check?
Extreme views. Eh, eh, that's what the, the talent's warning is, right?
When attempting to bring a compromise between two extreme positions, you gain a plus ten base chance to skill tests. Cause that would have made that a pass.
I think so. I think the extreme position of don't rebel against your lord and rebel against your lord, I think those are two extreme positions.
Cause I mean, I don't think it changes how he reacted to it, but I think it might have changed it from a fail to a pass.
Yeah, well, I think, so, I got sort of stepping back as like, you know, because, you know, like, I think he's more confused. Like before, he was like, he was certain you were lying, or at least not being entirely truthful. Now he's just like a little more confused, right? And it kind of took the wind out of his argument a little bit.
Alright, yeah, but what is the, the rest of everybody else doing? By which I mean the rest of the, the players.
Yeah, we got a body to deal with.
Yeah, are we gonna, um, clean up that body and get thrown away?
We should definitely do that, but is Elja still there?
Um, she's hanging around, yeah.
And they're just right by the body, right?
Uh, they're on, they're not right by it, but like, everyone's kind of like gone and taking a look at this point, including Elja. And now she's sort of, um, she's sort of back into the crowd.
Uh, is the town beggar there that we had carry the last corpse?
Yeah, he's, he's always around.
Is there any way we could pay him to take care of that corpse?
Uh, certainly good.
I do have a cheap necklace.
Alright, uh, why don't you attempt a bargain with Galmak, who is now demanding an increase to the fee? Because this is technically two corpses, as you need him to get rid of both the skin and the body, as he...
Uh, that's, that's, that's fair. That is fair. Now, how much would that be? A necklace and how many pennies, Mr. Beggar?
I think he's gonna like, look at his hand, and he's missing one of his fingers, so he holds up all the fingers, you know, for, for... And then he thinks about it, and he goes, "No, no, eight pennies."
Eight pennies and you'll take care of the body? Alright, we have ourselves a deal, sir. And I shake his hand with missing fingers and hand him nine pennies.
Cool, yeah. He, uh, gets up, goes inside and he starts like picking the disgusting mess of a body up, and just blood is dragging everywhere, kind of making the dragoon house grozer.
Can I, uh, clean, can I clean up? Can I do the mop job? I'll have to stay in here.
Yeah, are you, so you're gonna clean up yourself? Just gonna like spend a couple hours cleaning up?
Yeah.
Yeah, Russ Mucen will also lend a hand, uh, cleaning.
Okay, yeah, so I'd say maybe an hour to two, like, just trying to get it clean, getting, going, getting water from the thing and, you know, washing it out into the street or the town square. It's probably the best you can do, but you can get it looking pretty, pretty well. Um, so while they're doing that, Rutherford, Alexandre, is there anything you guys wanna do in town during the day?
Specifically?
Yeah.
I mean, you should. No, everything I need to do, I would need to do with Russ Mucen. So I guess I would just help clean and speed it up. Wait, no.
Would you?
No, I won't clean. Never.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I'll, I'll manage. I'll manage the cleaning, yes.
Excellent. Uh, Alexandre, are you taking care of anything during those couple hours?
I think the only thing that I need to take care of involves Brutus, which means that I need to wait until, well, I should wait until everybody else is ready to go to do that thing.
That's cool. Um, let's see. Yeah, I think, uh, what, what is your character doing? I'm just curious. It could be as simple as like, you're just went back to the, to the tavern, sat down, just like ate breakfast and calmed down, or like what?
I mean, I'm probably still like town center, having conversations with people. I mean, anybody that wants to have a conversation, you know, I'm there for it.
Yeah, um, so, I like, real quick, like, a couple of villagers asked you about, um, they ask you about Marcia, and they're like, a couple of them think that like, she's right, some of them think like, she's also that she might be the witch, actually. Um, you know, a couple villagers say, well, there's a Hufeld girl, she's probably the witch, or maybe it's Delilah. Or can men be witches, right? Like, you get a lot of stuff like this, right?
Those questions I've literally already answered for. Yes, men can be witches, they're called warlocks. Marcia, Marcia is a hateful old woman, but I assure you, she's not a witch.
Right.
Neither is that Hutsfield girl.
Yeah, um, and but during this, you get something different, is one of the guys who lives out, um, he's a small-time farmer, villager. Um, he does, he did his shift in the mine earlier in the year. Uh, he's sort of a, sort of an outsider to the group, um, uh, to the village. He, he arrived here maybe only a few years ago. Um, you know, he comes up to you, uh, his name is Al, uh, Alger, A-L-G-I-E-R. And he comes up to you and he says, uh, "Mr. Alexandre, uh, I, I, we've been having a, I have a problem. My good friend, uh, Aspar, A-S-P-A-R, the old hunter who lives in the woods, has gone missing. I haven't seen him in three weeks." I went up to his cabin and nobody was there.
How often does he, uh, typically stay out alone?
I mean, no more than a week at most.
What I mean to say is, what is the length of time between when you normally see him and when he is there?
Um, you can see him sort of like, kind of like blush and look away a little bit. And he says, um, it's, um, you know, I, I see him most nights when he's here.
So on the daily, is what you would say?
Yes, sir.
So he's been gone nearly a month now?
Ye- yes, sir.
Uh, I had a curious question. Is this somebody that I, I knew about regularly?
No.
I mean, not at, uh, I guess Aspar, not, um, Algiers.
Yeah, no, he's just like a villager. Um, Aspar, not really. He's the village, um, he used to be the old gang, his fam, his father was the old gamekeeper when the lord actually lived in the castle. Um, you know, kept people from poaching, but since that's not a problem anymore, he's sort of a lord that lives out in the woods, um, but he's been here his whole life.
Very well, I will add it to the list of things I have to look into today.
Uh, thank you, thank you, sir. And, uh, Alger, walks off, and then for the next couple hour, for the next hour or so, you're berated with again the same questions.
Right, all of which I will answer.
Alright, cool, so, uh, the, uh, the area is clean, uh, your guardhouse, while it still smells gross, um, you know, it's at least not bloody anymore. So what's the next move, guys?
Uh, time to find that miner dude.
Yes, we have to go investigate the mine.
Talk to Brutus, Brutus, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's exactly what, um, that's exactly what I think our next lead should be. For now, it looks like Alexander's sort of placated the village. Hmm, you know, more or less, so that's, that's good. Um, but the sooner we get on with this investigation, the better, I think. It'll provide more leads.
Yeah. Sounds good to me.
Half our way is Brutus, by the way.
Um, so it's probably like a good five-hour trip, if you're walking normally.
Cool, enough time for a conversation.
Is Genevieve bringing her horse?
I don't, I don't know if that will make her faster, right? Cause it'll just mean I'm faster than everybody else.
Yeah.
Could be useful.
I'm gonna strongly suggest that we take a, a cart and either oxen or, or, you know, horse-drawn cart, something.
I don't think that my, my horse can pull too much weight, right? It's not that type of horse anyways.
No, more for in case something happens.
Yeah, yeah, like, and there's, hmm, there's probably some, but you'd have a real hard dime getting somebody's, uh, like oxen-drawn cart, because they need it, and.
Right, I think, I say we just make do with what we've got, rather than cause a problem.
But I, and I, but I think the ronsey can, could carry a cart, but it wouldn't like it, cause, you know.
Yeah, it's not a horse bred for it.
For, like, carrying, I was asking for more like a combat kind of thing.
I'm sorry?
I was asking more for like on the combat side, not really to speed it up.
Yeah, I mean, having a horse is a huge boon in combat, especially for Genevieve, cause she has like a ton of talents that make her better at killing people while she's on a horse.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take the horse then.
Plus it makes you look more intimidating.
Also, if we all get killed, you can warn everybody faster of the incoming terror that approaches the village.
There you go.
So that our next characters can be ready to fight.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good. Um, so we're all getting out, heading towards the village. You said something about a conversation?
Oh yeah, I need to have a conversation with Genevieve on the way, which is now gonna be me trudging along as fast as I can behind a horse.
I'm pretty sure she'll move to you guys, your, your guys' pace anyways, so it's not like she'll move the horse really fast.
Nah, make the fat old exercise.
That pace is gonna be really, really slow considering that I have one.
Uh, gotta attach a wheel to your leg.
Yeah, I mean, so it's a five-hour trip normally. It probably takes like seven hours with Russ Mucen hobbling along, unless you wanna let him like ride the horse.
No, 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 I will walk or I will ride a cart. I'm not, I'm not gonna take someone else's horse.
Well, seems we don't have a cart.
What about just like a sled?
Yeah, you can pull your servant on a sled.
I mean, by the time we get there, it'll be like night, right? So let the sleeper.
Well, it'll be evening, but yes, I mean, if, uh, yeah, you could, like, you could probably requisition a cart, but you'd have to make King Lender McAllister the great carry it, that's the horse's name, by the way.
Yeah.
And like he, it, it would be faster, but like the horse would be annoyed, and I don't know how much you care about that, but that's what would happen.
Is, is there an ox in town that I could purchase?
Uh, purchase? No, but you could try and borrow it.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll try.
Yeah, so, go ahead, um, geez, are you gonna like grease his palms with money to get the oxen? Right, there's probably some fieldhand who's watching it today.
Like, I'm renting the ox, I'll like bring it back to you, you know?
Yes, uh, that's exactly how I'm gonna position it. I'll need it for the day and I'll bring it back the next. And, uh, I'll give him, uh, five shiny pennies.
Okay, so not that much, but enough, you know, that's some decent pocket change. Um, yeah, give me a bargain test and make it challenging. Nice. Um, yeah, I, he agrees, and he hands you the, you know, for just, uh, what was it? Five, five pennies? He lets you rent his oxen cart for the day.
Excellent.
Yeah, uh, so it will take you guys about five hours to get there with Russ Mucen riding on the cart. Um, who is driving the ox?
Uh, Russ Mucen, I'm riding in the cart. I'm not walking.
I do appreciate that your fake nobility is better than my actual valet sociality.
Yeah, so, so are you driving the oxen, Alexandre?
No, no.
Are you sure it's walking the right way?
Russ Mucen is driving the ox, apparently.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll drive. I mean, I'm not gonna do anything fancy, it's just follow the road.
Oxen kickflips.
Yeah, okay, cool, so, um, yeah, so you're heading out in town, crack, 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 you know, creep, 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 oxen cart, moving along. Um, go ahead, uh, have your conversation, just kind of let me know.
Well, I need to, yeah, I need to talk to Genevieve. Uh, tell me, what do you know about Sir Aspar?
Do I know anything about Aspar?
Not much, nothing more than what I explained. You probably haven't had much talking interactions with.
So, uh, she turns to him and shakes her head and she says, um, uh, nothing much. I just know that he used to be, you know, son of the, what, what was he? The son of the, the?
The old, uh, gamekeeper, basically made sure nobody poached.
Yeah, he's, but you know, since it isn't a problem anymore, it's not, it's not much of a business, so, um, yeah, I've only seen him once or twice. I've never had any problems with him. Why do you ask?
Uh, apparently he's gone missing. He's been missing for the last three weeks. I believe we should make it a, something of a priority once we get back to Vogenhoff and to investigate.
Uh, she kind of looks at him confused, and then she says, uh, he's missing? Him? He knows his way through the woods, how would he get, go missing?
Yeah, I think you're confused. He's a game warden, not a tracker.
He does live in the woods.
Yes.
He lives in the woods and hunts.
Plenty of people get lost in their own backyards.
Uh, suppose.
Either way, he is missing. I didn't say he was lost.
Do I know if the area, like, has a problem with like bandits or like wild animals or anything like that?
Does have a giant white monster.
Yeah, I mean, besides the giant white monster, um, why don't you give me a, I think it's a folklore test, like a local folklore test.
The local yeti.
Yeah, besides the local yeti.
Yeah, your grandfather.
You mean dad?
Dad, oh.
My daddo.
Otherwise known as Sir Monster to you.
I'd never.
Would this, would this be a standard?
Uh, yeah, actually, you've lived here your whole life, so make that, um, a plus ten percent. Uh, and the easy scale.
That's routine.
Routine, routine. Uh, challenging, sorry, already have routine, that's fine, alright, nevermind. Um, yeah, not much more than the, like, the yeti that you know about, and, um, this area had problems with bandits, but the green man took care of it, so that's about as well.
So, uh, she shrugs and she says, like, other than maybe a wild animal getting him, I have no idea, but maybe, how long has he been missing?
Three weeks.
Oof. Uh, she looks a little discouraged at hearing that, cause it feels like one or two days should be, three weeks is a lot for someone to get lost in the woods and survive. Uh, she, uh, she says like, let's hope that, uh, get Game Hunter knows how to survive in the wilderness if he is lost.
Again, we don't know that he's lost. He's just missing, and again, I believe we should investigate this matter as soon as we return back to the village.
Uh, she agrees, and she says, uh, uh, who told you about this?
Sir Algiers.
I don't know him too well.
He worked at the mine for a bit. I believe he's off shift now.
Makes sense.
So what I'm reading here in the meta is that Rutherford and Russ Mucen killed him.
Uh, no, don't, I don't think that happened.
No, no, no.
As a side note, I think we should change our clothes.
I don't want to get my nice clothes dirty, okay?
As a side note, I'm hiding here in the corner.
Just because I'm suspicious does not mean I killed anyone.
No, but naturally it does make you suspicious.
Well, the.
Anyway, as I said, that was just a joke, it's a meta joke.
Trying to get that pompous noble eel going here.
I feel like I'm, uh, Jay Jonah Jameson in this town. Get me pictures of the green man! Like, he's a menace!
I mean, apparently yes.
Of course he is, he played a man alive.
This green man sounds like he's the witch. What even is going on in this town?
The last thing I need is these people to believe that there is a witch. Even if there is a witch, a witch hunt is not what this town needs. It will result in a lot of people being dead, and the last thing I need, especially with a tithe coming up, is a lot of people dead.
How do you know a lot of people are going to die if there's a witch? How do you know a lot of people are going to die if there's a witch hunt? If there is a witch.
I'm sorry, did you ask me how I know a lot of people will die?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you must be new here. This town is full of Zegan, Helts and Hutfields. There will be a lot of dead people if there's a witch hunt.
You are bad at your job, sir.
And you are bad at pretending to be a noble.
How dare you?
I dare, and that's enough, sir.
Gentlemen, I believe we're getting off track. We all have a vested interest in making sure that the two families in town don't burn it to the ground. And if that means that we have to avoid a witch hunt, then so be it. And while we're at it, we should figure out what happened to the miners, as it will very likely calm tempers.
Hmm, I'm more interested on why this whole witch theory started. Why does everybody believe there's a witch due to the miner?
Cause a witch hunter came into town and accused them of being a witch. That's why the people believe there's a witch.
Like, that doesn't, just because that happened suddenly, probably doesn't excuse why everybody's suddenly pointing fingers at each other that they're being a witch all of a sudden.
Because forty percent of the town hates the other forty percent of the town and the easiest way to legally kill one another is to claim that the other is holding a witch. It's very easy.
So what you're saying is we can just accuse one side of harboring a witch? And then we can just annihilate them?
Your problem there is that if you accuse them, immediately it's gonna come back around and they're gonna accuse you of being a witch. Also, they're gonna try, try to kill you for having accused one of them for being a witch. There's a no win scenario here.
Well, there's also the not insignificant point that in order for the accusation to have any weight at all, it has to have the backing of, you know, a representative of some kind of authority. Whether it's the graph or much more likely the church.
They're not gonna wait for that, though. These here are lynchen folk. They will come after you.
I'd say that's either.
Fair enough.
Um, so while you guys are traveling and maybe a couple hours in, we're gonna have that moment. I don't think there's a passive perception stat in this game. Let me double check that.
I mean, there's awareness.
Yeah, I don't think there's like a passive perception thing. I guess I could have, no.
I mean, I guess you could just take perception plus awareness and then if you have it, just use that against whatever.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't hit on it, um, while you're walking and talking, uh, can everyone just give me a perception test? And make it, challenging.
Oh, sorry, you said perception. I rolled awareness.
It's the same thing, really, unless, are you trained in awareness?
No, no.
But that's the same role.
Yeah, yeah, um, it should have been awareness, not perception, that's my bad. Uh, you're not supposed to roll sets in this game. You're supposed to always roll a skill, um, but yeah. Genevieve just waiting on yours. From what I can tell, Rutherford, let's see, no crit, no crit.
Yeah, but two successes, still pretty good.
Um, while waiting for Genevieve's roll, that'll help determine if she gets a crit, that might, that might change things, but otherwise, uh, Rutherford and Alexandre, while you're walking along the path or while you're riding, you, as you kind of get close, you're north of the North Field Bridge, right? So you're on the ro- road directly to the mine. In the underbrush, as you got close, you saw it rustle and then you can like see a figure running out of it. Um, it's up to you guys what you wanna do about that.
What shape figure?
Halt!
Yes, if it's an animal shape.
Humanoid.
Okay, let's say if it's an animal shape, I'm not gonna shout halt at an animal.
Alright, yeah, um, you sound, you shout halt, but it's, it's running, right? Like it's getting up to run. Uh, if you like, you may chase.
So away.
Well, I, I suspect that the only person who's really in a position to chase is, uh, Genevieve, cause she's on horseback.
They'd be going into the brush, you'd have to dismount. Right, she's like, he's like running into the woods.
Oh, into the woods directly. Alright, well, I, I'll say right now, I will stay with the cart.
I'm not gonna chase after somebody that's running away from us.
Well, Rasmussen will draw his flintlock and just prepare it. Uh, but he won't take any other action beyond that at this point.
Okay, uh, Rutherford, are you gonna chase?
No, but I'm going to be on alert.
Right, uh, Genevieve, how about you?
Uh, how, how crowded is the?
Oh, I thought she was busy at the moment.
Then I guess they get away.
Yeah, I think we'll just carry on with that.
Yeah, I wasn't planning on chasing them. I was planning on like not even moving while we ongoing and now we're just like here alone with an ox and a fat elf.
Um, yeah, I think maybe she didn't even notice it or like by the time she did, it was too late. Uh, the figure disappeared further into the forest.
Uh, was the, was the figure recognizable or was it just like a figure that we saw run into the, like away from us?
Uh, why don't you give me a perception check and make it difficult or what did I say? Challenging.
We're supposed to do awareness, not the.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh.
By the, yeah, uh, would you, I mean, you can use a fate point if you'd like to have that, that seeing, but.
No, 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 it's okay.
Um, yeah, you are so oblivious to the, to this. Um, that like they say, halt, like the figure is gone by the time you're able to like take a beat on where he was. Um, you know, and all I can hear is the the emptiness of the woods.
So, uh, Genevieve looks at Alexander and then poses two questions and she says, one, why would they run away from us? And two, who runs away from a bunch of people? Uh, and runs into the dangerous, dangerous woods?
I don't know if he heard you.
I think we should just make haste to the mine. How far away are we?
Another hour or two.
Yeah, we should probably just keep going from here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be lying to the mine, I think is the best, uh, is the best approach.
Feels like an ambush.
Yeah. So you get to the mine and without much incident, um, there's like a little, there's like a little palisade built around it. There's a tiny dock, where Horseface loads up his, his riverboat. Uh, and there's currently nobody else there, except for you can see smoke rising from Brutus's hut at the mine.
Okay, uh, I think at this point, Rasmussen will drive the cart towards, um, towards Brutus's cabin direct.
Yeah, so as you, uh, pull in, right, right, uh, I imagine Rutherford, you're looking no, noble at the moment?
I'm looking extravagant.
Yeah, yeah, um, the door opens and you see this like beat up old guy. He's missing one of his eyes. He's got a nasty eye patch on. He's got a bull whip around the side of his, of his, um, at, at his hips. He's wearing leather pants and a leather jacket without the sleeves, you know, leather vest and that's it. And he sees you all coming up. Um, he notices Genevieve and he says, so they're finally sending the law up, huh?